Okay, adoption of the agenda. Are there any public comments on the adoption of the agenda? I will now close the public comment period and there will be no further public comment allowed for this segment. Is there any motion to adopt the agenda?
I would like to pull something from the agenda.
That's fine, you can make it.
Yeah.
What would you like to pull?
I'd like my motion to pull eight C. That was a came in kind of late and we needed to go over it and I did go over it, but it needs to have a have discussions on it.
Sure, that's fine. We can table that.
No, next meeting. And I recommend it goes back to the policy.
It was, yeah, it will go with the policy committee first. That's my, you didn't pull eight C though. Environment and plants policy.
So is that a motion adopted excluding yet?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda, pulling eight C, having eight C go back to the policy committee and come on a later agenda to the board.
A second.
Motion seconded by Director Thornborough, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Agenda is about. Public forum. Please note the guidelines for the public forum as they appear in the meeting agenda. As a reminder, under the Brown Act, the public must address all the public comments to the board, not to the staff or other members of the public. And due to the Brown Act limitations, the board is not able to discuss or take actions on items not on the agenda. Public forum is now open.
Be assured. Yes, just feeding it up like advertising somewhere.
So what did you read at the beginning that made a change?
We're going to be following the Brown Act guidelines more strictly and following instead of more of a town hall forum dialogue. Public, you know, we're going to be presenting each segment in its entirety before public's going to comment. You'll see as we go.
So you're, the board is going to use the Brown now?
We've always been.
Not the Brown Act, the parliamentary. That's not me, Robert Trolls?
We're opening, we're having a special opening session for public comment where we will receive the comments. We're not going to have like a back.
Like we're having now.
But we'll count that as part of, which is, are you on?
Yeah, I just want to say something that tonight from six to eight, Garden Valley Fire is having a presentation by El Dorado County for vegetation reduction around homes. And they're going to be targeting Stuart Mine Road now. So that's, and they're having like five of them all over the county. And this is where they target, the areas they target here a year, like last time, I think it was down in Garden.
Okay.
So anyway, that's, that's tonight at the Garden Valley.
Six to eight, thank you. Okay. Anyone else from the public?
I'd like to jump in if you indulge me.
Yes.
Before she goes for public comment, this is regarding her public comment.
Okay.
Morgan Galliano is with Forest Resource Collaborative and I would just, this is going to be part of my gentlemanly report as a good news update, but the district was awarded a $1.2 million grant to do Cal Fire Wildlife wildfire prevention. And Morgan and her team at Forest Resource Collaborative wrote the whole grant, did all of the work. And so I have to give her a huge thanks and a huge shout out for the amazing work she did for this district. And I think she's going to come up and ask for a partnership on another end, different, different process. But I just want to first say that, you know, to thank you to Morgan and to give her a public recognition for the hard work she has for the district. Thank you, Morgan.
Yeah, you're welcome. Kind of the first big project for Forest Resource Collaborative. We're a small nonprofit that just formed in 2022, me and the universe, wanting to bring more money onto the divide for forest projects or self projects, helping local landowners. You know, do work on my property and things like that. So that's our, our long-term goal is to help build the forest infrastructure on the divide. I have notes that I can go over in my three minutes, but. So I'm also obviously a volunteer with your community grant advisory committee. And our organization, Forest Resource Collaborative, is applying for a grant through the California Strategic Growth Council for community, they call them community resilience centers. Centers are intended to help communities adapt to climate change related events and hazards to function both around. Our year round function objective is to run forest related programs and then on an emergency basis to be able to open as like a cooling center or be able to distribute water, food, or provide charging stations, things like that. The grant we're applying for is a planning grant, so it would be a two-year grant if it's awarded. As part of the grant process, the Strategic Growth Council invites applicants to partner with, they call it a co-applicant. On the application, the co-applicant's role is really simple. It's basically just a formal commitment to be a stakeholder on the project and to advise during the planning and grant process if it's awarded. So FRC wants to invite the organization to be a co-applicant with us. I have a handout if, so you can read a little bit more about the grants. Do you want me to scan those out? Anyway, so I just wanted to invite your participation as a stakeholder and co-applicant. I think it would give more background to the business.
And just to give a little update, I don't think anything from the district is more just a collaborative partnership.
Thank you. Mitch, we discussed this in the grants committee, so during the grants committee report, I'll discuss a little more on this as well. Okay, thank you, Mr. Saunders. Anyone else from the community? I think we're really good, according to the new, what's that?
I just asked him to make sure this gets put in the meeting minutes or whatever on the, on the, on the website.
Thank you. Noted. Public forum is now closed. Okay, is there anything you would like to add or address these comments? Okay, all right, consent calendar. Approval of the minutes, I do have a public request to pull from Bonnie Neely, items B and C. I don't see a reason for that. That's just my input, but that was a request from Bonnie. Anyone else on the committee?
I make a motion to remove item D. D, it would separately outside of the pizza.
So you don't have to make a, you said to make a motion.
Yeah.
So you did make a request to remove it, so it's now removed. The motion can now be to accept the consent calendar sans item four D.
Do I get a motion?
Quick question. How did you get this information? This should have come to the district.
What information?
Does someone protect you?
Yes.
We received an email that was directed toward the president regarding an item being removed. So it's not up to the public to remove an item, it is up to the board to remove an item. So if you, any of you need more discussion for a consent calendar item, that is when it would be removed.
Sometimes I get those requests and persons actually here like Cherie sometimes, so they'll just.
Seems like it would have to be here, so that you could say why it's not going to be removed.
Yeah, so. I just, I just, okay. Did kind of get a motion to accept the consent calendar except for item four D.
So move.
Second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion is adopted by two zero.
Okay, item B, I just removed it just as a principle. Anytime we remove a member from the committee, we should at least have a discussion, even if it's going to be a a procedural one, just, just to make sure that it's a public transparency.
And then our policy says that.
Yes, and our policy posts that it has to be.
Yeah, I will indulge, if you, if you allow me to indulge the board. We're removing Mr. Mead due to lack of attendance, in fact, never attendance and as part of the irrigation committee. Our regulations state three consecutive meetings of non-attendance and they can be up for removal. It has been, again, no attendance and he's been on the committee for, I want to say about 18 months or so, maybe a little longer. So it's been a considerable absence and we'd like to get somebody into the committee that can participate and maybe provide a perspective that we're not getting from this number. And they're doing a poll, they also say a procedure for removing that the person being removed has yeah, opportunity to represent their, be their case and all that sort of thing. So we would absolutely have done that, but we've noticed this at both the irrigation committee and at the board. And so I'm not sure how this person.
Yeah, at this point, there's been no attendance in 18 months. No, initially it was, we were having Zoom, so you'd be able to attend via Zoom. And once the Zoom option went out, his work will not allow him to be here.
But otherwise, some of us have been on committees, so without.
But staying down to this item, he has never attended, whether it was on Zoom or not. So that's the independent discussion.
And the one he was spoken to was last summer before I came on as the general manager.
Okay, I make a motion to remove Eric Mead.
Second.
And I will just note that there's a typo on the agenda. It's not the finance committee, that should be irrigation committee.
Good second.
That's like.
Motion passes removal of Eric Mead, a member of the irrigation committee, consent calendar item four D. Financial reports. Five A budget access, Nicholas.
If you want to just go ahead and read the consent. No, no, on your, on your.
Yes. I will now open to public comment. Are there any comments from public? Uh, financial?
All, all four items.
All four, do you want? Sure, anything you like.
You don't understand the amount of money that changes every month, like a year ago, it was 3,000. January, it was 7,000. July, it's like that. I thought, I mean, that should go up and down if you have somebody retiring, but what is that dollar amount that's going out of the account? And it switches. Does it seem consistent?
Is that your whole comment?
Well, yeah, I just want to know why the, it's not the same, because you pretty much have consistent retirees.
Well, that's a revenue account, so it depends on if they're paying their premiums.
Right.
So we're, they don't all pay them at the same time.
Okay, so somebody might pay two months at a time and they're not consistent every month.
It's reoccurring, so that it's, you know, health, their health benefits going change in January, or if they have a life-changing event.
Okay.
Like a birth, marriage, divorce, anything like that, but it would only change, it should be the same amount for them typically every single month of the calendar year.
Okay.
But it is a revenue stream, so it depends on if they've actually paid it enough.
So we have no penalties for them not paying at one time?
Well.
We want to make a public comment of the board.
Yes, yes, so we'll just kind of get the mode of this, so any, we'll comment on all these afterwards.
On the, we have to check.
Go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, the check 35066 for White Brenner. I'm assuming that's for like June. It was paid in July, but she was here until the end of June. Is there a report? Because the July 1st through the July 30th report has, appears to have checks that are from fiscal year 2022, 23, and the new fiscal year.
Yeah, I'm currently going through.
That's okay, we'll catch up after, yeah. Any more sure?
I mean, am I going to get an answer to that?
At the end of the whole financial reporting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what, my question is, is there a report to where you can find the current fiscal year charges? That's what I'm, instead of, because this is a mixture we get to. That's what I'm asking. That's it.
Noted. We'll swing back a little. Any other public comment? Okay, how about from the board? Go ahead, sir.
Are you closing public comment?
Public comment is now closed. Open it up to the board.
First of all, on the cover page, the FY 2024 budget action. I appreciate looking at percentages as opposed to amount. Everything is even across and then we can determine amounts. In the past, it was like a bar chart where everything was but, for me, conceptually, the way I think, I appreciate having. Some other comments on page one of nine. Irrigation water sales, the second one down. That reflects, if I recall, four fifths of what was budgeted last year because we only had four months of irrigation sales in that fiscal year. Which, which, there's the second one down.
There's two budget reports.
I'm looking at the first one, one of nine.
Yes, what line, what line are you looking at?
The second line down from the top, water sales.
Water to I apologize.
It shows a minus of 235. And my comment is, is that I believe that that shows four months of irrigation sales as to what was originally budgeted for five. That's correct.
I don't know if I'm allowed to stop or not.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you look so sad. I was in trouble.
Yeah, so this is basically your 23N, so that would in last year, because the, it was a I want to say normal, but it was the common water year, which was May through September. We precharged for those water bills. So right now, we're doing, we're charging for irrigation as it's being used, not, you have to pay them ahead of time. So it's going to look a little different because the fiscal year splits the water year. So last year, it would have been July, August, September, except July and August were billed July 1st. So it's a little, it's going to be a little bit off.
Yeah.
And this year's going to be a little off because we have six months of waters.
Change in the water.
Well, we still have five months.
We still have five months.
We still have five months, just how many?
Been pushed.
Five months have shifted, you know, still maybe five months.
I could do a different report that would show irrigation as a water year instead of the fiscal year.
Okay. No, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to point that out by looking at the big picture, the picture's changed basically. And then on, just to comment about the interest income. It's, to me, that reflects rises in prices as opposed to using this money for a specific thing. To me, this is, as costs go up, so does the interest go up. Also, in the grant proceeds and the sale of assets. Those were not budgeted, so when we look at the minus unfavorable for those, for the revenue for that year, those were not in the budget, so that really diminishes the, the bottom line there significantly, significantly. And on proves nine of nine. Or seven of nine, I thought. Reflects that same comment about, and also it shows that capital outlay and capital improvement costs were not budgeted. And again, that shows a significant difference between the unfavorable costs and no, it was actually there. That's all.
You're the board members?
The same problem that, you know, just we'll talk about in the fund summaries, still on page nine of nine for the first. Shows the notice on the original budget is one, one hundred and forty thousand, current budget, one million, one oh nine, period activity, one seventeen, fiscal activity, negative five fifty-two, but the variable is negative, is like double that, it's one million, six hundred and sixty-two as the variance, so.
Yeah, it looks like it's adding five fifty-two and then one one four.
And that, anyone that's negative, that seems to be the same throughout, so it shows on the on the fiscal budget report, the same thing occurs, where it's a negative one million, three hundred and fifty-six in fiscal activity.
I think it's a product of the end of the year and that's why it's negative.
I think it has to do with the budget being entered incorrectly last year and I was slowly, I was scrambling to finish the fiscal year 22 budget while learning how to do Tyler. And now that I'm all caught up with that, I'm now working on this last fiscal year, 22, 23, fixing the budget import. And so the numbers are correct, but the negatives, the variances aren't going to be right because the budget was entered as like a credit. Like we had an account with a balance and not something that it was drawing off of and comparing to.
Yeah, because we see the saving capital reserve is a negative three million variance, thirteen thousand, so.
Thank you. Only comment I had is support director Stovall, wherever possible, use percentages. Because one district with a large budget might look like a little or a lot versus a smaller district with percentages will.
We're trying to, we're trying to see if that's an option within the, within the system. And I know there was a comment of making color-coded percentages to make sure that they're within reason. So is this like on track or not on track? And that's also something that we're trying to work on to determine if we can make the system do that.
I believe this is the portion where we would address the public.
Sure, yes, I'd be happy to answer your question, Cherie.
Thirty, we have check number thirty-five zero six six.
Yeah, I looked it up. What I believe is that's part of the transition. That is likely the June bill with a slight bit into July. They did do a little bit of work for us at the beginning of July to help with the legal transition from White Brenner to BBK. There was some legal issues that we were facing with an employment issue from a former employee that they were advising on as we were bringing on Mr. Splendorio and his firm BBK. So I will get some more information as to when that was, I understand, I'm getting to your question. Your, your question was, will you get a clean fiscal report? And the answer to that is yes. The end of year report will come out, we have to wait until, I believe the end of August is when we have to actually have that come out. So until it gets to the end of August, you will have a little bit of, you know, kind of crossover, but you will have a special financial report that will be near and close for fiscal year 22, 23, that you'll be able to cross-reference everything going backwards.
Okay, what I was asking is how, because when you write a check in July and August.
Yeah, we, we closed public comment.
Okay, but it didn't answer my question, so it was about the checks. That was part of it. I mean, I just want to know if I can get a report that shows for the current fiscal year. A check.
Nicholas, could you follow?
Yeah, I think if you want to put in a PRA, we'd be happy to give you a current check report for what's been done.
Just for July. Okay, for this year.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Moving on to informational items, board reports.
Go ahead and read the whole thing.
We will receive all these reports and we'll open these items to the public comment after all have been given. So we got board report. Who would like to lead off, Director Stovall?
I think you're in.
Representative Saunders?
I submitted the board report, the significant stuff from the regional water authority is the contract with regional water authority and DWR is now finalized. So as they finish their projects, they can now send them in for reimbursement. And what this means is that all of the projects for the Sacramento Regional Water Basin for groundwater will be at least 55 million of it will be reimbursed. And in cooperation, we're a part of the Upper American River part of this, when we are dealing with VA agreements. Anything we do in terms of replenishing their groundwater or being, being able to get credits, that's where we come into play. So hopefully, this is part one and part two when we deal with our voluntary agreements. Hopefully, we'll have reimbursement for replenishments as well. The Aqua stuff was there, I attended the vice president candidates, had some meetings. We have a webinar which is coming up in September and I believe Nicholas is going to be one of the panelists on that one. And we will also have a program at Aqua where Adam is going to be one of our panel speakers. So putting everybody to work. So it's not just me. And we had our community outreach and our staff and directors were there for national night out. And I'm sure they have more pictures on it as well, and there's a picture there. And that's it for my board impression.
Thank you, Director Saunders, Director Thornborough.
I was also at national night out, I got a little bit miffed. We're sitting in the booth and there was Nicholas and there was Director Saunders and Director Seaman and myself and my wife Charlene. And they go, the Chamber of Commerce was doing a raffle, where you buy the raffle tickets, you throw in the bag of the prizes you want. So we're sitting there finally going to call the raffle winners and they call Nick, he goes up and picks up his prize. Then they call Donna, she gets up and goes and gets her prize.
Really?
Then he calls Saunders, he gets up, goes and gets his prize, raffle was over. So Charlene and I were sitting in the booth by ourselves, we bought more tickets than anyone did, we got nothing.
The community got zipped.
Hey, we had a good time, Charlene had a blast, yeah, she loved it.
And I will just give, I'll let the cat out of the bag, our, the water drip is Mr. Thornborough's lovely.
Drop, she's not going for it.
Drip drop. Drop, is Mr. Thornborough's lovely wife, Charlene, and she is absolutely the most fantastic man God we could ever have.
Right on. And she's the right size for this.
He don't live with the beer. Well, what's funny is that in the suit, she couldn't see the little kids coming up. And then in the suit, the eyes are like way apart, and so she can only look through one eye. And so I got a picture of her talking to this little girl with her head all twisted and just this one eye. It was pretty funny, but anyway, she, she loves that stuff. She, she look Gumby every year at Halloween.
It's good, man.
Yeah, she had a good time.
Yeah.
Even though she didn't win anything.
Director Seaman?
So we had irrigation committee, policy committee, national night out, and then I was doing some animal evac training out of county and met Kevin Kylie and was able to walk up to him and thank him for all his support. And even in his email that he sends out to his constituents, there's a picture of Tim and me in his newsletter. I was PR. I was P R.
And then. All I have to report is I'll be attending the August twenty eighth to thirty first, twenty twenty three C S D A annual conference and training. I believe with Nicholas.
Yeah, I'll be in, I'll be in Monterey as well.
And that's all I have to report. With that legislative liaison report.
Was there a public comment?
Nope.
At the end of everything.
There is public comment. It's just.
At the end of everything, all right. Not just each step, okay.
I would say not the end of everything. Just we'll get through reports, there'll be public comment, then there'll be board discussion. So in the middle of everything. But yeah, let's get to the report.
So the legislative report I sent out, so color coded, yellow means it's held in committee, but it's suspended. So suspended means it's a two year bill, so it will come up at next year's. It's not dead, but it's, it may come up next year. So we see two of the three water rights were suspended. The third one is still active and we go to the appropriations committee. And the significance of that is that bill. For the water rights that we oppose, the author is the chair of the appropriations committee. So just to give me some insight on how well that will probably go. So that probably is going to pass without significant. Lobbying and work on our part, or at least trying to get some days amended. So the bills have been being amended as we go through, but. It's not looking good. The blue ones are held in committee and not suspended yet, so they may not be dead. And everything else is moving forward. So. That's it. If anybody had any comments on any of the.
Yeah, the, the one water bill that is moving forward has been significantly amended, water rates, but has been significantly amended. And does not pose the same risk that it did before to the water rate system. It's very much neutered down from where it used to be.
And another one, A B six seventy six, the one that defines what the legislative rules is, that bill was amended to have no regulatory impact. So that one, we can be neutral on that one as well. The one A B fifteen seventy two, that one was amended so that agency doesn't have to do enforcement on that. So we don't have to be out checking people's non-functional turf watering. So we can be neutral on that one as well. So a lot of the bills have been amended favorably.
That's another. Thank you. Operation manager.
Yeah, thank you. So our production is starting to ramp up for July is kind of typical this time of year and for the start of the year. Soon that go up, a little bit higher than last year. So we will work on. Communicating the best, best use, water use practices to stay within our goals. The same as last month, you know, a sheet of kind of a summary table of different work done throughout the system. Kind of locations and just some photo documentation of some different works, you know, a lot of, a lot of brush, brush cleaning. A lot of maintaining the dish, make sure it's still fine with different parts of the district. Like last, you know, few weeks, we really made a lot of ground and caught up to, you know, the growth. So I think we're not here as many calls and busting in, so I think that's good. Did a big meter installation down the pool area, one of the last AMR, there's some work to be done before we do that. So we got that done this month, just a few different water breaks. Tried to break down, these are just kind of examples. Each picture kind of ties to one project is, you know, the effort it goes into completing each of these, each of these tasks. Quick listen to C I P projects. Obviously, we're starting the year here, so I'm starting. Starting those off. Our priority, get going first is the. Paint line project, getting back on program that we take a couple of years off, so we'll start that again. So we're going to deal with replacements, should have something next couple of board meetings to bring back the board with. Other master mirrors still waiting for those to arrive. We heard mid-August, I'll have a third update. Pump station, we're still different pump stations going through and repairing where we, where we can to make sure they're operating properly. Having a couple of pump issues, a couple of starter issues that we're mitigating as we get through. Water system reliability study, we're really close to getting that pretty much complete. Did some field work where the engineer came out, looked at some names, dug up some locations, looked at them. Had some more discussions between your distribution staff who's been here for extended period of time, gives some insight to that. We kind of got one final step. To really put together our P R Bs and the. Not location, but you know, last work that was done, last ones to replace with that, finish that down in the next couple of weeks. And we'll be able to get going on that final report for the district. Just general things, you know, getting a couple of current projects going, finalize the AMR grant funding report and talking about that. But if I finalize that, it would be the last of it. Do some tree removal from Long Laper Canal, we'll talk about here in a minute. Continue to work on the canal line water smart grant, possibly an environmental review for that right now. You know, general customer service, which is a daily, daily thing. So the next section is talking about mosquito fire erosion control planning. So I kind of took some photos of the upper canal. Starting from, you know, structure treatment, try to give a full review of what, what are values are moving forward. Every time we go up there, it looks, it looks really different and the logging operations there are significant. So trying to come up with a plan, how to do this, how the best plan of attack. And then we have, you know, we've worked with our, with Castle, we're back up there after the, the recent. After the fire, they got back up this spring. So we have come up a plan. We know where we need straw laws. We know where we need silt fencing. So we're going to start working on that, coordinating with the landowners. We're going to need, you know, road repair. I think we'll probably come back to the board with some kind of estimate and a funding option because. We're coordinating with the landowners that are up there, but you know, they're not going to do all of it. So we're going to have to, you know, bear some responsibility, I believe. I'm worried, we're going to work on that because as of right now, you know, once we hit a rain, we're not going to be able to get up there. And that's going to, that's going to be not good. We, we need to have access. We need to maintain access up there. Otherwise. Yeah, I don't even know. We have a big rain. I mean, we could have so much mud up there. So we, when we were talking, you know, grading the road and adding gravel to it so we can have access during rain events.
And I would just add to that, that last year, after the fire and during the big beginning rains. We were trying to clear and get things maintained that burned. And we're in big draws and large erosion areas and we just couldn't get there. We had to actually rent bulldozers and, and use equipment that we don't have to get access to finish work. And make sure the district's supplies were safe. So this is what Adam is proposing is. Hopefully going to alleviate having to do that in the future.
And we have to be reimbursable through the.
We think so. Yeah. It, it would all be as a result of the, the fire damage. So yes, our thoughts is it would be reimbursed.
I'm worried this year it doesn't even do it, you know, it's going to be so bad. Is, it's going to be just, the, the amount of silt runoff is going to happen is.
I mean, if we don't do something now.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we're still going to see, I don't think we're going to be able to mitigate every erosion. It's just too much. But I think we could maintain, have, maintain the roads, work with the landowners up there to get the roads navigable during rain events. Which will help out a lot. And then it'll give us access to address those issues. We do have those origins. Because there's just too much material out there to stop everything. It's. I mean, this is, so if you see from the pictures, those are going to do adjustments. I mean, you're talking huge areas that are not, don't have any vegetation on them. And have all been disturbed by logging operations.
And I'll just, I'll just say one thing real quick. I don't need to cut you off. Some of the stuff that we budgeted for has already come in, a little lower costs, I E. the V F D replacement at. Walton treatment plant is, came in about ten thousand dollars less. So there is money available in the budget to cover these costs. So we're not just trying to throw money that we don't have into these problems. We're trying to take money that we are saving through other areas and move it here and then hopefully get reimbursed on the back.
How many acres burned up there in, within, do you know how many acre within our system that burned up there?
I know on the top of my head, but I could, I could definitely get that number.
Well, just ballpark. I mean, that was, that would explain how much area you're talking about.
Yeah.
You know.
The station's about five to six miles and you're, and you're talking.
You're probably talking about ten to fifteen thousand acres. The total acreage for the fire was seventy six. And we have maps, so we can, we can do some calculations to make sure we have the actual number, but I would say it's, it's at least fifteen.
Well, kind of puts it in perspective as to how big that area is. Big, yeah, we're looking at, and it's pretty big.
And, and a lot of the issues we're seeing is some of the areas were very intense. And then some of the areas were fair and not so as intense. And it changes the soils based on the heat of the fire. And so that's what we're fighting right now is, is the, the soils are like fluff and soft. They just want to keep moving. And we're seeing the sloughing, we're seeing movement, we're seeing everything, even without, you know, a lot of moisture in the air. Or, you know, coming from the air, we're seeing movement.
Would that be able to be an engineer involved?
Yes.
And then the last page is the monthly water demand assessment. Sure, you know, someone, we're, we are using more water, which is expected. Shows that usage over time.
And I'll just add a little bit to the fire report that Adam discussed. I was going to say this, imagine I can say it now. We went yesterday and did a tour with some legislative staff. And some, the resource, natural resource conservancy. And we kind of went through some of those mosquito areas and, and also, you know, where it touches the king fire. So we're, we're looking at all of the different things that are coming about and we are trying to partner. So S P I is a major landowner up there and a lot of our ditches go through their land. They're probably one of our major partners in this. And we reached out to them to hopefully partner on some of this. Not only fire mitigation, but also, you know, working with the roads and how to get access to the area so that we don't have. An issue like last year, we couldn't just physically get in there.
Water resources managers report, please.
So I'm hundred eighteen and our routine inspections, we've got five escrows. Out of one of those, we got a new plant tank installed. We had our nose bill, sir. And then we have the second zone report submitted August first. Biggest thing was we had quite a bit of trees removed from the C D S fields. We've got, it's fenced, but it's real poorly fenced and it's very old. And then over the years, you know, just, it's kind of falling apart. So we had, I'd say like twenty something trees taken out so that we can prepare to put up a new fence. It's along one of the equestrian easements for A L T. So we're really just trying to get that fence repaired so that we don't have some. Some stragglers kind of go into our leach fields there. We had zero percent rainfall. It's not that exciting to see, but it is common. No real changes on the temperature or precipitation outlook, but I did find some interesting information about the next. Like winter rainfalls that are coming with it being the switch from the, what has it been, Panini, Panino. It's supposed to be worse in the winter of two thousand fifteen and sixteen, which I didn't remember that far back. So I looked it up and I found a rain station that's, it's a little bit north of us, but it was the closest I could kind of come up with. And they got sixty eight point seven eight inches of rainfall that year. And then if you go down to my rain chart here, we've got thirty nine. So we could be looking at quite a bit of rain in November and December, which kind of plays into Adam's siltation issues. So hopefully we can get everything kind of buttoned up for that.
Any major amounts of snow?
I don't know. It was just a rainfall thing off the like California state website that I found it on. But I can look into it for next month. And find the snow levels.
Yeah, I'm curious to know that.
Yeah. And I really forgot it because of just my rainfall chart. It's kind of one track line, but I'll, I'll do that for next time.
I think we can add a potential snow outlook, because that's important.
Right.
Already up in down the. I'm already talking. Is it already updated on the wastewater discharge permit?
The update is we gathered a lot of documentation for our engineer who is now reviewing that. We've been in contact with the county. I've been in contact with both county staff and county supervisor. To discuss what it is that they're looking for from us. And they sent us a list of documents that they wanted to review and wanted us to review. So Ben Engineering is based, has those documents and they're reviewing those. So the update right now is there is no update, but we are still working very hard on.
On that fence, is that a G P A D fence or is that supposed to be like a Auburn Lake Trail slash G P A D fence? Where, where we should be having them put out some money towards it also. I mean, I know we bite it just because, but is that one where we can get money from Auburn Lake Trail to help repair that fence? Because it's to keep their folks out of it.
We can reach out.
Yeah.
We'll take a look at.
The horse trail.
Yeah, so it's in a easement. We'd want to maintain the fence to keep them out of our property. You know, if it was like a boundary fence, that would be a shared. I don't have to see exactly what's out though.
Well, we'll take a look at it this week.
Yeah, so we're not just taking on expenses. We don't need to, or the whole thing. Thank you.
I could do today, L T and water business here, so. We have the general manager's report.
Thank you. I'm gonna just go briefly through what we have here. Been meeting with the, the FEMA officials regarding the flooding and the fire. Did meet with some union officials from both Local One and Level Thirty Nine. I met with Local One here in person. Local Thirty Nine Zoom call. Again, as was previously stated at the last comment from Director Saunders. Did meet with boards through as a parlin regarding the W D R to ensure that we were working to be on the same page. Have been doing a lot of work with B A, the reservoir reoperators group and also with R W A. B A. Ad hoc committee, which I was placed upon. Posted coffee with the G M at Cool Coffee and Crumbs. Sorry, I had to think of the name. A few, a few, a few members of the public came. I got to spend some time with some of our finance committee members. Also got to spend some time with some of our board members, so that was good. See, also held tacos with the G M at Red Roosters. That was a good time, less public came, but still got to interact with some of the people from the community.
The tacos were excellent.
The tacos were excellent.
And the board.
And the board was even better. I did a ten national night out on August first. So that was a great event to just make awareness to children and the community that were here. We gave out some water conservation pamphlets. We also had the drip drop out there, which, well, I, it's, she wanted to call it the drip. So we're, we're, we're going to, we're going to name it. We're going to send her to the school and we're going to name the drip drop, whatever it's going to end up being. So we're going to have the kids name it. But anyway, National Night Out was great. Lots of people attended. We got great exposure, you know, the, the community got to see us there, gave out otter pups to the kids. So that was fun, you know, anytime you see a kid running around hopped up on sugar, it's a good day. Livens up the place, it does one of the places. So the good news updates, I kind of already went over that. I will quickly go over it. If anybody has any questions about the grant received, it is called the fire safe on the divide. The exact number is one point one nine two, two hundred and twenty two. One million, one hundred ninety two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Sorry, I tried to do a, a little bit faster than I should have done. I couldn't figure out on that. So anyway, that's fantastic. a little bit faster than I should have done, I couldn't figure out, and that, so, anyway, that's fantastic, um, it's, it's a super big deal for the district, we've gone for this grant before in the past and have not been able to secure it, so, again, many thanks to Morgan and her team, Adam was a huge integral part in helping Morgan put all that together. Um, what this will allow us to do is purchase some equipment. So, uh, part of the grant allows us to buy a new excavator, uh, potentially a skid steer, some masticating heads, I'm also gonna try to roll in a dump truck as part of that program as well, even though it's part of our CIP, if we can get, um, Cal Fire in this grant to pay for that, then I think it'd be better. The rest of the funds will go towards hiring a forester and, um, doing land clearing and building fire breaks utilizing our infrastructure. So the goal is to take some of our canals, some of our, our infrastructure and use them to build a big fire break and to also not only protect our infrastructure, but to protect the whole divide community. So this is a big one, um, so again, thank you to, uh, Morgan for that, um. I didn't get to, uh, I'll say this at the last board meeting, or maybe I did, but I did say at the finance committee, we received a, a thousand dollar grant from, uh, JPIA, Aqua JPIA for a wellness grant and we're gonna use it to put in some, uh, water bottle fillers for the employees. Uh, the goal, I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to do both, but the goal is put one here and put one down at the, uh, Sweetwater Treatment Plant to, uh, let guys come in, make sure they're drinking clean water, make sure they're staying safe out in the field. Uh, federal appropriation, so, um, Ms. Donna Seaman got to meet with our illustrious Congressman Kevin Kylie. Uh, he has placed us in the queue for one of his appropriations of one point two five million, we've been working with, um, an engineering firm, um, a potential size of a water tank down at Sweetwater, um. Adam and I have kind of settled on, we probably don't need the two millions, that two million gallons that we originally thought, because the, the tank we're pumping to is only a half a million, so if we had about a million, then we'd probably be really good, so, um, we can cover most of the costs of this tank project with the federal appropriation, uh, and very little coming out of the pocket from the district to do this, so that's the goal, is to, to spend the little, the least amount of, of district funds on this project as possible. Did you have a vision?
What's the size of the tank, sir, no?
So there is no tank there right now, basically the, uh, uh, Angel Camp tank is a half million. And so we pump directly from the treatment plant to Angel Camp. Uh, the goal is to put a tank in the middle so that we can fill that tank with water and we can hold water there so we can take the tank, the treatment plant and run it less or have less, um, uh, pumping costs as water is moving through the treatment plant, so uh, basically give us a bit more of a buffer in case we ever have an issue with that treatment plant, we'd have a, a million gallons of water that we could, we could rely on.
Right, but at the last time when the, the plant went down, which was a couple of years ago, um, one of the reasons why I was very vocal about this, getting this bigger tank was because at the time that it went down, we only had like a day's worth of water.
If that would give me, we can have hours. So if it's, if it's high flow to me, we're gonna, we can have hours.
Right, exactly, and so that was the main, in my mind, and, and, and the main purpose of putting in this tank was to alleviate that problem.
So we'd be putting in twice as much as, as is available right now, so we'd still be putting in a million, where right now we only have five hundred thousand available. And so that's, that's the, we're basically doubling uh, what we have available now, and that's the goal, is to get, at least get more, the, the, another issue we're facing is footprint, the area where we have to put this tank, um, which is, is not large, and so the diameter, uh, of the tank that we could put in, it would have to be quite a tall tank and visually not always appealing, and we, we've already dealt with several visually appealing issues at this facility.
I think we need to figure out a way to make it a lot more than a million. If we're gonna spend this kind of money on it, I think it needs to be, because if we only have a few hours of what we got there now, we're doubling that, we're not getting, we're not, we're getting a day.
I, I, yeah, I think what I can do, or what we can do as staff is put together a proposal for different sizes and how much the district would, would cost the district, and, uh, then we can, it's ultimately your decision, I would, you'll have, have to come to you to be approved, because it's gonna be a construction contract anyway. But we can have a variety of different sizes and you, as the board, can choose which size you'd like to go with.
Along with the cost.
Yeah, along, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you got installation costs as it is, and, and to increase the size of the tank is gonna be less than if you come back later to drive another tank.
Sure, I think if I can recall, um, we looked at almost two million, like one point eight seven five million was approximately one seventy-five, one hun- one million, seven hundred fifty thousand. So, uh, another seven hundred fifty thousand gets you another million, basically, so it would, it's not exponential, it's, it.
It's like two thirds, for another third, you could do.
I, I hate to use percentages, because it's, it's gonna, I could give you all the numbers when we do the.
Right, well, I think, I think what I would be looking at is running the calculations, go back and look at the water usage at various times during the year. And look at how much water do we need to have stored there to uh, have a, like a two-day shutdown of the plant, something like that, you know, we.
I don't know if we could cover two days, but.
Yeah, we, well, we need.
Probably cover a day.
We need, we need to set a target as to what the minimum allow, amount we, we need to cover.
Okay, I think we can do that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would be looking at.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, did you have a down, sorry.
Not gonna fly here.
Oh, no, you're, I, I call this.
Anyway, also, you're gonna have to look at, uh, number one, uh, what the environmental aspects are of it, of whether or not you can legally, environmentally go a bigger size. Because you've got multiple, uh, triggers that will cost more money. So that.
So we shouldn't have any issues since it's already disturbed, it's already our land and it's already, we, we had something there previously. So you're gonna have a kickback on this, most likely. Um, because of where we're locating the tank, we're not locating, we're not doing any earth moving, you know, the only earth we, we would do, doing is to build the foundation, and so there's already a previous foundation in that area.
You, you were talking to you.
Um, and, and you is.
Big flag.
It, it's a flag, but I don't think it's as big a flag as you think it's a, the person, it's a customer we've been dealing with there, so. I don't think, um, it's gonna be as unsightly a view as it would be to most.
Paint a mural on it.
You can do that.
Problem solved.
All right, one more cup. One more comment to support Director Thornborough. Uh, it should be data-driven, the requirement for the size of the tank and the need should be based on
Sure.
what, you know, we determine as the minimum based on the temperatures and uses during that time of year, not to hopefully get it at or under what the grant would be to be a zero cost, you know.
Well, that's, yeah, so we can also offset the other district costs with state grants, and so we're still working on that, so that, um, my goal is to not spend any local money to build this project, and, uh, kind of do everything I can to make that happen. Um, really quickly just to finish up, uh, we did hold a ledge visit yesterday with, uh, Kylie's office, LaMolta's office and, uh, Diane Feinstein's office. Uh, there was also the nature conservancy, um, SPI was there, um, the County of Placer was there and PCWA was a gracious host and they actually used our facility. Um, they put all the, all of it together, so, you know, huge shout out to PCWA for considering us and allowing us to be a part of this tour and this, uh, visit, but, uh, we also helped host the, the visit here in the office and then we we all caravanned out, uh, from here and made a stop at Stumpy so we could look at, um, you know, the district's water supply and how that is affected by fire and the mitigation efforts after the fire. Uh, again, uh, as stated by, uh, President McDonald will be attending the CSDA conference in Monterey on the twenty-eighth and the thirty-first. Um, I do have a couple of other items that I would like to, um, jump into that are, um, we are gonna start advertising for irrigation and finance committee vacancies now that we have Mr. Mead removed from the committee. On the irrigation side and the finance committee is still, um, three members short, so we're gonna again continue, um, advertising for those vacancies, um. The, uh, Aqua Conference will be upcoming at the end of November, so believe, uh, as if Adam is speaking, Adam and myself will be attending from the staff. We will need to discuss which board members will be attending, so as previously stated, I'd like to have no more than two board members there, just to not have any brown act issues while we're, uh, traveling around, so I'll.
Go to place for the conference.
Okay.
Doesn't.
I, I, I know, but it's, it's, the propriety of it still could be, could seen there, I just, it's easier to, uh, not put us into those situations than it is to have those situations. So, uh, that is something that we can discuss, um, moving forward, we do have until next meeting to make that decision, so, um, I will reach out to all five of the members and see who would like to go. Um, we do have um, a quick presentation on the investments from, um, Robert Mitchell, like, Robert, Robert, are you with us?
David's here.
Sorry. It's not connected.
It's not Robert.
Were you gonna? Were you gonna have it on your end, Nicholas, or did you want us to share?
We're sharing it right now, so you can go ahead and, um, start, uh, your presentation, it should be popping up on the screen momentarily.
There we go.
Excellent, thank you, Nicholas, we appreciate it, and, uh, good evening, everyone, thank you for your time, we just wanted to jump right in, as Nicholas mentioned, it'll be a quick presentation to go over uh, the investment results, uh, over the last month that we're able to achieve, uh, for the district, next slide. So this, this back one. Back, back two.
Same presentation for Vegas.
Yeah. So slide number two shows the portfolio details, that'll provide you all of the specific information of every investment that was uh, purchased, uh, over the last month. It does include some investments that are going to settle after, uh, August, so you do see, uh, one on there for the seventeenth, uh, which was a CD, um, everything else on the screen has been settled, and so we're able to get a very nice yield to maturity for the portfolio for the district of four point five nine percent. Quite a bit above what we originally proposed to the district, obviously as interest rates rise and as we're able to get spreads on the CDs that we're able to purchase, how we're able to get a favorable outcome for the district, next slide. So this is pretty much an ideal distribution, um, over the five-year time horizon that the government code allows. Um, really, we want to see numbers around twenty percent, um, for each of those years. Some of them, it's just timing of the specific month, they'll be shifting as the quarterly reports are completed for the district, but, um, it's a very nice spread and this doesn't include the money that's going to be set aside for, um, class and checking account, so this is just the US Bank managed portfolio. Next slide, please. This is an interest revenue projection, so basically we calculated every single investment that was purchased. Um, so these are accurate numbers, but obviously for anything that's maturing during the fiscal year, whether that money is reinvested or not is a future decision, um, but ultimately you're going to be able to achieve uh, the revenues projected on the screen, um, very nice to see the district be able to uh, get, uh, almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in interest revenue projected for the twelve-month period ending July thirty-one. Um, with that, I think that, that's the last slide on the presentation, love to answer any questions the board has.
So this was the same presentation that was given at finance, um, and we just wanted to make sure that the board was made aware, but go ahead, please.
Yeah, I have a question for you, um, nine million what is invested, my understanding?
It's a seven and a half million done in CDs and one and a half million done in California class, it's called.
Okay.
And California class is our operating reserve, so instead of operating, um, our, uh, with our savings account, we are utilizing California class, which is also a liquid account. Um, same day I've got cash availability, and so we can have money in there and it's still be earning almost, uh, five and a half percent in California class.
Okay.
So that's gonna be our.
This is more long-term.
These are the long-term, yeah, yeah, so there's a, there's a short-term mix, that's about six to nine months that if, if you have an emergency, we can still pull, you know, six to nine months worth of, of funds, but the long-term, you know, this goes out to twenty twenty-eight, I believe, David, am I correct in my twenty twenty-eight?
Yes, sir.
So, so that is the long-term nature of this, yes.
Due to the inverted yield curve and the higher short-term interest, we'll be able to not sacrifice yield for liquidity, so we're in a sweet spot.
And it's laddered appropriately.
Yes, we laddered it with, we're gonna take all comments at the very end. If you don't mind. Um, it's, it is laddered and it is, um, utilizing, um, set amounts that will release um, as cash is available, none of these are gonna be automatically reinvested, we will look at the, the, the market, we will determine what is the correct uh, uh, vehicle at that point, so as one of these becomes, you know, into maturity, say the six months one comes into maturity, we, we will make a decision as staff, do we keep going with this investment, do we change it to something else, um, and then, you know, as things in twenty twenty-eight become available, you know, obviously at that time, interest rates may change considerably and we may end up pulling some of this back from where we're at now and reassessing where these investments go in the future.
Passive investments with active management.
I think, um, since we have, um, somebody online, if there was a question from the public, we can add, uh, take a question from the public. Um, and then we're gonna let Mr. Bill be, um.
Okay.
Uh, kicked sign off.
Mr. Dow, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Stephen Dow, um. Bill, you said, uh, we four hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the end of January, or July thirty-first of next year, correct?
It's, uh.
That's our projection for.
Oh. Will, uh, will that money be able to, uh, will that be liquid? That money be able to be used?
That money will be.
Back into the plan?
The board will decide on how to allocate that money budgetarily as time goes on, but yes, that money will be fully liquid.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, David, thank you, Robert, we appreciate you guys coming in, we'll, uh, let you guys get back to your, uh, your regular schedule program.
Thank you, thank you, guys, take care.
You're welcome.
Uh, really quick, before you turn it over to public comment, I meant to mention the string of my report and I'll, I'll just apologize, um, because we're a member of the chamber, I just wanted to point out that there is a chamber mixer this evening, if anyone would like to go, it's right down the street here at the heart of the divide. Leave it six to eight, that's all of my report.
I just had one to add that I so it was an annual report and that was, uh, we did a five for the Ottawa Fuel Hauser Excellence in Communication Awards for the work we did as the district for, uh, getting the water reduction done with the water revenue, like all of the patents and, uh, signs and banners and, or whatever it's gonna be called, so.
Thank you for that, okay. I will now open the public comment section. Is there any public comment on any of the items reporting?
Go ahead, turn operation, operations.
Yes, everything, for information.
Um, sure, go ahead.
Uh, what does the VA stand for in the, in your report?
Voluntary agreement, so that's the, we just formed a delta.
I thought it was some department.
It's actually a VSA, but most people have just shortened it to be a VA.
What's the S stand for, service?
Well, you walk in the line.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure. Center Water, look in the water transfer policy that the acronym is in.
Any more? Mr. Dow?
Uh, yeah, so, Adam, um, I, I think I mentioned this, I don't know if it was a month ago, two weeks ago, but it's, uh, two seed of trees going out of town, going to its Auburn green wood right alongside the ditch that we just had lined a couple of years ago, and they both died. And they're right there next to the ditch, I mean, and if they fall over, they're dead, if they fall over. And they're right there next to the ditch. I mean, and if they fall over, they're dead. If they fall over, they're gonna rip that ditch out. Has anybody thought about cutting things down? Need to do it. Because if they fall over, by ditch.
Noted.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah. Go look in.
Yeah, I was addressed. But we will definitely look at the trees and determine if it's if there's something we need to do. Also, we have our engineers out if we need to. Just somebody to give determination. Unfortunately, they're not on our property. We may not have rights to cut them down. Still, we'll make it our right.
Then it could be amazing.
Yeah, any further public comment? Now we'll close the public comment portion of this section. Anything that the staff want to address? Board comments, questions?
No.
Okay. Moving on. Committees. Irrigation Committee Report. We will receive all these committee reports and will open these items to the public comments after all have been given. Irrigation Committee, Ray Griffiths.
Would you like to give an announcement about irrigation committee? You're welcome to or not.
Not. I didn't know I.
Oh, you're fine.
He's going to.
I could just update that. We did semi finalize the irrigation ordinance. However, we did input a few more things on the staff level, so it will be moved back to the irrigation committee to be re. Re approved at the irrigation committee before it comes back to the board. So you're thunder.
No, he didn't say. Oh, I'm saying it's a. The committee worked really well at the at the last meeting and they. They went through it all and pretty much beat up as much as they could, and it was ready to go. To the board until staff decided they had input.
Yeah.
Now it's going to come back to us, you guys.
And the input that the staff had was not significant. There were just a few things that had happened over the years that we wanted to ensure was included in there as well. It mostly has to do with outages and, you know, the potential for priority levels. And so you'll. The irrigation committee will see it as they come back.
And they had a legal opinion they requested.
We did have it. We we did get a legal opinion.
Next meeting date is August seventeenth. Thank you. Finance Committee, Andy Fisher.
So Andy is not in attendance. You are are welcome, or I would be happy to give an.
Maybe you could cover for I might have missed.
Sure.
Again, we had the gentleman give the report he just gave to us in more depth to the finance committee. And we then they finance committee. Discussed the possibility of or the recommendation of moving a reserve fund from one hundred and eighty days to one hundred and twenty days to the board. And then we also awarded Chairman Miller. Or any proclamation and a plaque for services chairman over the years. And it's a nice little ceremony we thought. And I'm not sure if there's anything else.
We did also receive the initial audit, which we will discuss in more detail at an item here. Unfortunately, we still don't have the final. We do have a draft. It is. It is a strong draft. We are waiting on one more piece to the puzzle. Which is being developed by our CPA firm and in conjunction with Jessica Butler, our office manager. So. I'm assured that we will have it final final at the next board meeting.
As I recall, it was a recommendation in a finance committee to move the reserves from one eighty to one twenty.
So we're going to discuss this later on. If you want to, you could discuss it now, or we can discuss it. That's an item as well.
That's from the finance.
Yeah, I did have a recommendation from the finance committee.
And the next meeting date is scheduled for August twenty four.
And that is a a special meeting, just so you're all aware. The regular scheduled meeting is August thirty first. Unfortunately, with some of staff and board members out of town that day. We did move that forward in one week.
Item seven C, committee for policy manual. That would be the director Saunders will see him. To comment.
So most of the items are approved on consent calendar. The sexual harassment prevention and use. Conduct was on the consent calendar that passed along with the social media policy, which was updated. The SEQA policy went to legal, so it's come back. So that'll be reviewed by our policy committee. The next ones we will be looking at will be our asset management. Probably the sexual harassment from the board of directors.
And personnel manual. We also received a legal review back from personnel. And so we're doing some union checking on that, and then that should be coming to the policy committee as well.
And then we also plan to bring a six month update and a review of the going forward, how the policies updated and. Going from resolutions to policy and that will have that kind of guideline to start going forward.
Anything else?
And we're going to start that last one to policy committee.
The six month. Yes, we have. It's on. It's a standing item that we have. It's just an update on what we've done and then what we plan to do more. But it's been on there. He's everybody talked about it since we first started.
Next scheduled meeting date is also August seventeenth with the irrigation committee. Do you have a conflict?
Oh, one's seven thirty.
Eight.
Seven thirty and the other one.
Donna meets at seven thirty. Let me all pop on at eight afterwards.
Set their alarms and coffee.
Item seventy, grant writing committee, Director Saunders or Stovall, likely taking that comment.
A lot of that stuff was in the report and Morgan was here. So also to congratulate, thank Morgan for her work with. The organization to help with getting us this one point two million grant. We were trying to get it for Walton before, and now we get to do all eleven. Water tanks and throughout the district from Georgetown to Cool. So that was pretty good. And also would like to thank. Pilot Hill Range Number One for their letter of support to provide an area of historical and cultural significance to the district. So you were the first. Project that was funded in this. It was done pretty well. So we were the first to see funding.
And it's three hundred and fifty acres, I think, of treated area that we're in real tree. Is it three fifty or three five hundred? I can't remember. I know it's three five. There's a zero, but I can't remember. There's one or two zeros.
And then we still continue the work with. For the reimbursements for Fina and we had the road canal. Number five was done. And we're working on ultimately dredging. So the next step is to get the bathroom that you're on study. To see what it is versus it has built to see what we may need to dredge. The other things that are still in the works we did are still waiting for the hazard mitigation program. The appropriation is moving through when now we're for Congress that went down from one point five. It's now one point two five. And that's also what went to the smaller million gallon to nine hundred eighty seven K tank to fit the footprint. I know initially it started at, I think it was two to three million gallon tank. So we'll guess that'll come to the board to see what's possible and what we can. Do from in and out of MASH. We're still waiting for the. Appropriations from the state. I don't know if we're still going to beyond that. And ones that are still out and pending are. We're going to see if we can do anything for building any new water tanks, new reservoir, automated meter infrastructure, converting up country canals to prime band. Winding the lower country canals. Those are the things that if any of the other bigger grants come through, we can look forward to.
And then if I can add, if you don't mind. We did receive a note from our federal advocate that. Biden and Harris administration makes nearly two hundred million dollars available for drought and climate resilient projects. As part of the investing in America agenda. So I've already forwarded this to our grant writer. It just came in this morning, so I apologize for not being part of the agenda. But we are going to start looking at this for potentially offsetting those costs for the tank and other. Potential uses for funds.
And they were looking at a possible projects for Robert's grant and actually brought up about the world community results. Oh, what they said, the energy stuff, it really match?
It does not fit with because we're not a co op.
Yeah.
We would have to develop a co op. And so we could we could join a co op, but at the current time, they don't see a feasible path forward to develop that co op. There is one other thing I wanted to add.
Can I ask a quick question on that resiliency?
Yes.
We have one tank, and I don't remember what neighborhood it's in that's single by itself that if you if it if you shut that and drain it. There's no way to get water to the houses. And they were talking, they were trying to figure out a way to have a redundant tank or some way to get that. Area where they still get wider, they get water provided for them.
You'll have to give me an area.
I think that was the.
Yeah, you're talking. That's the. Because. Before Angel Camp, there's a custom.
Yeah.
Tank was driving a lot of customers out without water. But that tank is. That extra source.
Yeah, because that's a bad area where if you got to go down and do the service on it, which is have never. My understanding it doesn't haven't had for years and years to get it coated or whatever. There is no way to shut it down unless you shut everybody's water off for an extended period of time.
We, yeah, that that tank comes next year for going.
And then lastly, there's a thirty two million dollars available for clean transportation and planning projects. So. We will try to pursue some of this funding for the new rule for electric vehicles and. Non emission vehicles. So that will be from the California Air Resource Board or CARB. Leave this question there.
Yeah.
You were about thirty four thousand dollar grant from Elder Water Water AC for lining canals.
So I'm waiting for that to pop up on the agenda. But yes, we've talked to them about paying for environmental costs. Okay, and I will I will do my best to be there.
You expect them to check?
No, I just would like to give my support and thank them in person. You think it's important to build relationships.
And then lastly, as Morgan stated in the comments about. Partnering with her, the organization for resource collaboratives. So my recommendation from the grant committee at the role for the board is that. Have this on our next agenda item.
Yeah. So we will come back to the resolution of support for this grant to her agency, her organization.
So that's gone to the grants committee and then you're going to come to us. You've already made this decision at Grant's.
The agenda for next meeting.
Yes, it was we her president showed she that that had happened basically the day of. So she wanted to come in and present to you. Because we didn't have enough time to amend our agenda for this meeting. And so she's going to come back with a resolution for our next board meeting, and it'll be just you guys accepting. To be a partner. Again, no financial responsibility on our part, just to be a partner with for three sparks to collapse.
And it's time sensitive. So the. Braces to the week after our September board meeting. Okay. And your next meeting date is October fourth?
Yes, we meet the odd even month, the first ones they ever even.
Sounds good. Okay. Allow open to the public for public comment. Comments from the public. And now now close the public comment period. There will be no further public comment allowed. Any board members want to add to that or question any information you heard? Okay, then we'll. Public action items, A. And you accept the annual financial report for the year ending June thirty, twenty twenty two. Possible action to accept the annual financial report for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty two.
So unfortunately, the possible action will not be able to be taken today because this is not a final act report. So this will be a preliminary analysis of the audit. And I have a email note here from our CPA. I would just like to read this into the record. The draft audit is in its preliminary stage. It is still a draft. I have reviewed it, and it looks like there are minimal changes, i.e. formatting. Should be finalized very soon. In its current state, the auditors have not proposed any major changes to the numbers. So what you see in the draft matches to the trial balances in the financial system. So what are you saying here is that everything is coming back looking normal. Everything is, you know, I would say good to the financial aspects. The things that we're waiting to finalize are what is known as an MDA. And I know everybody loves their acronyms, and I don't remember what that is. It's called the Management's Decision and Analysis. And what this document is, is basically a document that states all of the work that was done. Special projects, CIP projects, and then what is the outlook for the next the next year moving forward? So that is basically what the audit is saying. I was I've been trying so hard to get this finalized, and Jessica has been trying so hard to get this finalized. It's it's we're like at the goal line. We're we're trying to punch it in. It's not quite fourth and goal yet, but we're we're running place. So Jessica, did you have anything to add? Because I know you've still been in contact with Louis and LSL on updating those NDAs and the rest of the document.
The NDA and done. We're just entering in the compensated app and substances. So I think that is also done, and we're we've sent it off to the auditors, and now we're just waiting you back.
So I would open it up to any comments or questions on the numbers that are presented.
From the public. Now open the.
Item fifteen. The post employment benefits other than pensions. What exactly is that? And. Why is there? I mean, like, there's like one point, almost six million against liability, but then we get three hundred and forty four thousand dollars entry. I mean, is that the same as the retiree benefit?
Whenever this is the finance committee meeting, and it was going to be the same answer.
But what? Well, I didn't ask exactly what it was after I looked at it.
This is. This is to do to deal with the retiree benefits.
Their health insurance?
That is correct. I would say hold your question, because when we do this, the auditor will be presenting this. So you can ensure that there you get your question answered correctly.
Close the public comment section. No more comments from the public will be allowed at this time. Board member comments, questions? Director Saunders?
Yeah, one was, is any of the unfunded liabilities put into the budget? Because then also it's unfunded, and that is, we don't have to pay it. So some of the things, if it's like four or five, six million. It's unfunded. It's good to know, but it's really not an offset directly.
So they are amortizing this and how much we need to budget for moving forward. That's what this chart tells us right here is how much to put into the budget for moving forward. And then we can use that number to help develop our unfunded liabilities.
That's the thing we're going to try and do the Cal Trust for.
Yeah, we. We would like to.
Fortunately, this is a non bird, but it will be on the. Ending the statement of revenues and expenses where it has admin and hydroelectric that's over.
Do you have any sugar in this thing?
Oh, it says grab butter.
No, 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 I meant to make sure I'm looking everywhere. He's looking because there's no page number.
Yeah, there's no page number. So, yeah, so that was the. The total for administrative and hydroelectric is three point six million. So do we have details on that?
So that's the that's that is a lot of this is asset cost, how much it is as an asset, not necessarily how much it is as revenue. How much the the facility is worth? So that we don't get three, three point seven million dollars. So that we don't get three, three point seven million dollars as part of hydroelectric, but it is worth three hundred and by, three point five million.
But if it's under operating expenses, it's not a revenue, it's an expense.
It's more than twice than it was the year before.
Yeah, these are under expenses. Yeah, so this was the thing.
I will make a note of that.
That's what I want to make sure expenses, more than double there and.
As for some of it, yeah.
Do you see what he's talking about?
Yeah, I found it, I found it. I will definitely look into that. That's a good, I'm sure that there's explanation, but I would like to know what it is first.
Yeah, are you done, are you done, Mark?
Yeah, I'm done.
Um, well, there's, again, no page number, it's uh, cash investment. Apparently the number was two G, our guy's half marks down, right? And that doesn't look.
Let's take cash and investments. It only got seven point two four four or somewhere else.
Where are you getting this? It says, it says note two on the top left, and it's app.
Note two.
Investment in state investment pool.
Okay, so I'm on note two, and what section are you looking for?
Well, the middle of the page where it has the restricted cash investments. Well, look right in the middle of the page, see, oh, like the hash marks.
So are there any hash marks? It's because it's still a draft, those were some of the, oh, I see what you're saying right here.
The number will be.
The number is too big, yeah.
That's usually what.
Those are four, those are the formatting areas he's talking about.
Yeah. In, so uh, this, this whole thing, I'll see this whole thing, and it is quite a bit above my head. What I wanna see is, what's the bottom line?
So I'm gonna have the auditor to do a presentation when this is final, so you will understand, and you can ask any questions, and they'll do a presentation based on it.
But my question is, we have a draft here, and it's supposedly the one they're gonna do on is pretty close to the same as far as numbers you just said.
Correct.
So we're here to show the bottom line. How much surplus do we have, or positive or negative? That's what I can find.
So then, some of that's not calculated into here. If you notice on the pages, how there's still highlight areas? Those are the areas where they're still putting in numbers. So the, the number, the bottom line number you're looking for, that's, they haven't submitted that to us yet. They haven't given us that, because they were still waiting on the MDA, and they're still waiting on the, oh, I'm sorry, what's the other thing? It's HR, it's HR thing, um, contributed.
No, consolidated. Compensated absences.
And it has to do with.
Like the vacation and sick time, everything that was paid out, what's still pending. So ultimately, the bottom line, what you're talking about, is if PCWA were to come, if we got in trouble and the market crashed, and someone stole our money, and we couldn't pay off our debts, and another agency wanted to buy us out, how much are our assets worth? How much are we worth? How much cash do we have on hand? What you wanna know is how much cash do we have on hand? What was our revenue from all of our debt that we owe? From, with all of our assets, everything else, like, because we owe ten million dollars for this week, well, we did, for the Sweetwater Treatment Plan. And then for the AMR project, that was another six million dollars. So we have a lot of outstanding debt, but it's being paid over numerous years. Right? So what you want is the bottom line, what is our cash on hand? What is, what, what was our revenues for last year? And that's usually what determines what we can put into the CIP.
Right, and that's what we've gotten every year for years. Yes, they say like, okay, well, we, we got in surplus one point two million dollars or something like that. Okay, are we gonna put, how much are we putting in the CIP? How much are we putting into, into whatever?
So you'll see in the reserve item that's on the agenda that has been kind of detailed. I asked, LSL does that for, did that for us as our auditors. Now we have a new firm that's doing it. So I have requested something that looks similar to that. This is their template. So I have requested it. I will be getting something. LSL says if they don't detail it like that, they'll make one for us.
Okay, well, it's kind of what I'm looking to see.
Yeah, and this is very rough. They didn't even want me to bring this to the board yet, because they were like, this is very rough.
Yeah. And, and, and I, well, I told them, and I had a discussion that basically we've been waiting too long. And I, and I said, I wasn't coming back to the board meeting without something. So that, that's why you have the rough. I needed something to be presented to the board.
Okay, and I don't think there's any action for us to take, which is.
There is not, unfortunately. And I would also say that the next agenda item, we could discuss it.
No, I, I think, I mean, next agenda, my next board meeting is what I meant to say.
You know, I, I agree, and I'm, I'm just offering, the next item, I don't think there's gonna be any action we can take on that as well, because we don't know yet.
Right.
Um, but we can definitely discuss it, so I'll uh, open it up. Any, for any other board comments on the audit, if you have any other comments that we can.
Appreciate you giving us what you could. Better than nothing, okay?
Yeah, it's not, but I guess. Really stuck with, with, with the timing.
And I, I know another thing changed with the Gatsby requirements, where they have to kind of add the liabilities from the pension and pepper in with the salaries, and for that, though, they subtracted that from the salaries, and it showed that we paid our employees twenty-nine thousand for the year, so we asked if they did want to actually give us the actual, because you cannot present that to our agencies that say we have six hundred thousand extra, and we're charging you six hundred thousand for cost, so make sure that we have something that represents that.
Sure, we're asking, clarify something for me. Uh, you keep seeing LSL, but Maze and Associates. So, so Maze and Associates is our auditor, that, that we entered into a contract with them right before I came on board. Um, LSL is our CPA, and so our CPAs have been working with Maze to ensure that they have all the documentation they need, and then if there's any questions, they run them through LSL.
So who's gonna be doing the president?
I'm gonna say Maze is gonna be here to do it, because Maze is, is the actual auditor.
Right.
LSL, I would ask them to be here if there's any other question.
Translate.
To translate. There you go. I was just gonna say that. Yes.
Okay, moving on to action item B, operating reserve transfer for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And reserve fund analysis and possible action to determine whether the board should transfer funds uh, one hundred and one eleven and bring forth the modified reserve fund policy for.
So the, the president.
Good, good for you, man.
You just adjourned the meetings?
I just adjourned that.
That's my job.
Well, you're too slow.
I'm retired.
We presented to the finance committee um, a potential upgrade to our reserve fund. In twenty nineteen, twenty, reserve fund was a hundred and twenty, because you guys are horrible over there, or was a hundred and twenty days. Uh, COVID, because of the um, cash flow issues that COVID brought on with um, having people not paying bills and, and basically a moratorium on, on those payments and not being able to shut people off and not being able to uh, you know, affect the uh, bringing the revenue needed for those. Uh, the district went to a one hundred and eighty-day reserve policy. Um, because we're back to, excuse me, where we were pre-COVID. The district is also recommending, staff is also recommending going back to the hundred and twenty-day policy, which was seconded by the finance committee. Um, again, I don't think it's wise to take the recommended action today due to the audit still not coming in as a final audit. I think that will be a, a better determination of when and how this reserve fund should be administered. But um, I would like to just kind of open it up for preliminary discussion from the board and from potential questions from the public and to see what uh, your take is on this. So we do come back, we can come back with a stronger recommendation that includes both the board's discussion and the finance committee's discussion.
This time I'll open this up to public comment. No comments or questions from the public? At this time, I'll now close public comment period, and there will be no further public comments allowed. Now, there are many board members, I'd like to, Michael?
Okay, how much? No, 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 I, I, I think it's great.
Okay, yeah.
Numbers are in the, in the back page, if you turn the page.
You what?
The numbers are turned, if you turn the page, all the numbers are on the, um, staff report. That would be uh, the recommendation is up one to three, one hundred and twenty-eight, one fifty day, or one hundred and eighty day. It's in the numbers of.
That's not what my question has to do with. My question is, how much are you holding in operating reserves right now? Dollar amount?
Uh, approximately one point nine million.
One point nine? Is that the four, four thirty-four a month figure, do you remember?
It's whatever, we're still basing, based on last year's budget, because we haven't gotten the updated numbers.
Okay, good. So what was the um, last year's per month number?
I, uh, off the top of my head, I would have to do some math.
Okay.
Well, it's based on the operating budget, so.
So if it's one point nine divided by six, that should tell us, correct?
Approximately, yes.
Right, did you do that, or? Something else?
During, it came to three twenty-three.
That's it? That's wrong, that's, that's wrong.
Oh, divided by five?
No, six. You said one point nine, right?
One point nine, three five.
They have to, it's.
One million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand.
It's one point five, that's in California class, and there's five or six hundred thousand in savings. So you're like one, two point one, I guess. I had to, I, I, the number is off the top of my head, I don't have.
Well, the numbers are kind of important.
You were giving those during the presentation. You were giving those during the presentation.
I will, I, I can bring those numbers to you when this is being determined.
Okay, I'd like to know, how, how much do you have, we're currently holding in operating reserve? And how much a month, well, how much a month that's based on?
Okay.
It's on the page right here, page two. First paragraph, last sentence. I don't know that one, um. So, what I think what Nick is talking about is that the surplus transfer to Fund One Eleven for CIP, those numbers are not concrete yet because we don't have the audit back. However, the operating reserve is based on this year's budget. What we budgeted for, this is actually a hundred and twenty-day reserve is one point five four eight, one fifty is one point nine three five, one eighty is two point three two two.
I'm not doing very good at explaining what I want, or what my question is.
So you can divide that by.
No, I get that. What I wanna know is how much now? This is to increase it or decrease it, or whatever it is that we decide to do. What I wanna know is currently, before we do any of this, what is, what do we have in reserves right now, and how much a month is that based on?
It's between one point nine and two point one, depends on how, when the bills be paid. So there's, there's, there's a one point five million dollars.
The bills we pay shouldn't have nothing to do with how much we're holding in operating reserve. That should be a reserve.
It was always in our savings account, now it's in a high interest.
Yeah, it does, because that's what we used to fluctuate. We, we still pull money to pay the bills.
Right.
And, and as that, it, it doesn't really move up and down. It just, the, so, the six-month operating reserve is, is still our, our, you know, cash flow, that's where the money comes from, and then when the county pays us our nine hundred thousand dollar property tax, that goes to offset those costs.
Okay, so my question is, how much are you figuring on we have in reserve?
So, right, it's, it's between one point nine to two point one. It depends, and I'd have to give you the exact numbers. I could, I would.
I don't wanna know how much, because you, like you say, you're taking money out, you're putting money in, whatever. Okay, I wanna know, what is the figure? What is the amount that is designated as the reserve amount?
You're talking about the resolution that you adopted like this last year?
Yeah.
One point four eight, something.
You know, well, if, if it's based on six months, then it's two point one. If it's gonna be moving down, that's where these numbers would come in differently.
So that would be three hundred and thirty-three thousand for six months.
That's too low, that's not right.
Yeah, I think right now, like four eighty.
Right. It was supposed to be like four thirty-four back two years ago.
Also didn't bring in a lot of money. In fiscal year twenty-two.
Well, it's based on the budget. You take the budget and divide it by um, twelve, multiply times six, that's what your reserve is.
Correct, that's what these numbers came from, is twenty-three, twenty-four operating budget.
All right, well.
So right now, we have, like Nick says, one point nine to two point one million dollars, give and take the billing cycles, because that's six hundred thousand dollars we bring in.
The billing cycle got nothing to do with my question.
We're not depleting those funds, they're sitting there and it fluctuates.
I, I know it fluctuates, but what's the target? What is the target?
It's what you voted on last year, and I could let you.
There you go.
We, we will, we will have that when we come, with the target, what the target will be.
Okay, Director Saunders?
Last year in April. Oh, I can't.
When it was one hundred and twenty, we were having cash flow problems, so it was one hundred and twenty in a value that we can keep in reserves and not have cash flow problems.
So as far as my analysis is, and also to, to uh, relying on our investment fund analysis, it should not be, because as they, they looked at our, our expenses and our bank accounts, and basically the lowest we fluctuate down to is, is approximately six hundred thousand dollars in liquid assets. So at no point do we really get to where we should have cash flow issues, unless we had an emergency, and that's where this reserve would, would step in.
Yeah, because one eighty was at the high end, and that's us putting half of our budget into reserve, which is a lot. And one fifty would allow for if one twenty wasn't a reasonable number, so.
And I think one fifty is also reasonable. Um, the recommendation came in from the finance committee, well, only because it was what we always had done. And if, if the board votes for one fifty, then I would say that that's also very reasonable. I think the goal is to, that we don't need to do six months of anymore, because um, a lot of that stemmed from people not paying bills, and our cash flow was way down because we couldn't shut people off. We had a moratorium, we had to still deliver services without getting any funds. Um, you know, we were able to send whatever we could to Tax Lane last year, and I'll just, you know, kind of the update on that is you'll see at the public hearing that the Tax Lane is way less than it has been in the previous years, even before COVID.
Yeah. I think that may also be due to a lot of the projects and uh, grant fundings and programs brought to help people cover, and people are also realizing that if they wanna keep their water, they need to pay, so that's uh, has helped as well, so people have talked back up, the economy has brought up with everybody, so that helps. The other thing I wanted to add is, um, whatever we do vote on, we do have the option, if we do have the cash flow problem, they can always come in and we can uh, have an emergency transfer and get it back. You get the uh, probably taxes, that's, that's usually a lot of the things, the county uh, the other agencies rely on that county money, and when it's late, that's when the cash flow problem comes in, because basically that's all of Lafco's revenue. So if they are two, three, four months late, no one gets paid, so that's why operating reserves aren't paid.
Director Stone?
To piggyback on that, when I look at this last year, there's three major unreasonable events that we got. One was obviously the transfer of the tax reserves. Another was the transfer of, I think it was two hydro payments?
The two uh, smud payments. And we didn't get our property taxes until the very end of the year.
And then, of course, the fire.
And I would say that through all that, we never ran out of money. We were ever.
My question is, with that, what was the low reserve that we got? I think that was.
Down to about seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars.
So this had nothing to do with COVID, and those are events that happened last year, and that's a context that I think we as a board need to look at, is how close we got.
That was my question with the finance committee meeting, they addressed that and took that into consideration at seven hundred thousand. So then they thought four months should work.
Yeah. In addition to that, we are looking at significant higher mitigation. If the road goes out, we need to so those unreasonable events are not over.
Yeah, and we still have.
That's the context I think we need to look at.
We do have an urgency reserve for that, too, so.
And we still have a, a investment emergency reserve, that is the short term. Six to nine months is another, you know, one to two million dollars that we can uh, book for as needed.
But the recovery of that through mitigate, uh, lit, litigation, who knows when that recovery will be?
We're, we're, so we're looking at, I would say, probably one year's time from today. So it's not, I'm sorry.
That's surprising.
It, it, you know, um, we're kind of in the last stages of data collection on that, and then we're moving forward, so we're hoping that we get to do some negotiating soon.
My point is that that's context from last year that we need to take into the. My point is that that's context from last year that we need to take into the current year.
Okay, um, so we're taking no action at this time.
No, we'll just table it and then it'll be tabled with the audit.
Yeah, item three approval policy five three of five environment. Public hearing. Direct charges, ordinance, on twenty-three certification, annual direct charges, fees and assessments, second reading.
So the, this is gonna be a very brief uh presentation, I'm not. Actually, I will say that we are trying to get to anything, sorry. I use the book marks, I keep forgetting.
If you're looking for clock, right?
I, I have, hey, I'm, I'm getting there, we're almost done, um, the uh. The good news is, we're down to forty-six customers that are going to tax lien, which is down from ninety-nine for first reading. Um, and then I'll just have Jessica read the title of the public hearing and then we can open it up for uh, for public uh. Uh, comment.
Okay, this is second reading, ordian, or ordinance twenty-two, twenty, twenty twenty-three dash zero three. An ordinance of the Georgetown by Public Utility District stating the purpose for adding to and making assessments levied upon the land upon which water service. Was used in charges unpaid for an annual assessment district levies.
So you're gonna open that for public. I'll now open the session up for public hearing, are there any comments from the public? It's now three fifty-eight. Go ahead, sure.
I don't see the uh current, um, the link when accounts are made.
The list was posted on the website about uh three hours before the meeting. Um, we had basically been updating it right away, and, and so the current list should be online. There is a list, it's a longer list, and it's all that posted outside, so.
What's in the packet is the uh Gazette ad.
Sure, yes, we did have that. We gave the public until ten AM this morning to get their name off the list before it was put in the packet.
What's the name of this one?
Direct charges?
And tax, uh, tax roll delinquencies, two thousand twenty-three tax roll delinquencies. Any other comments from the public?
No.
Nothing online.
No, now closes to public hearing to close, um, at this point. Are there any board members, have any questions on the side?
Are we really having the California Department of Forestry owe us money?
Yes, unfortunately, if they owe us money, we have to put them on.
They're not on the list.
Well, a lot of these have been reduced, so.
You should have an updated copy.
Oh, no, that's fine, I just, on the list in the packet, I.
Uh, yeah, Liz put out the most refreshed one in front of us.
The one that got published after the last one, okay, I get what's happened, just go through it and like.
Meanwhile, we're down to forty-six accounts. Um. They're totally fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents, which is. We haven't had this, at least the, we haven't had this low amount of counts since two thousand and nineteen, which is nice. So we're getting back to pre-COVID, and then out of the forty-six accounts, sixteen have been locked off most of the year. Twenty-five of them went to tax of them last year, so these are repeat offenders. Mostly.
You have a board comment or question? Do you have a motion?
Yeah, we do.
Oh.
Need a motion, let's do accept it.
I move that we accept. The report. All, uh, I, passes unanimously, five to zero, ordinance passes. Well, now it's, it's three, closing the uh public hearing at four oh two PM. Um, now we will adjourn to closed session at this time, we'll report out as required. We're reporting out of closed session with nothing to report, the time is four forty-eight PM.
And?
The script, and agenda, that's a little bit tricky today. Board member requests for future additions to future meetings.
I want this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, we already got it.
I just wanna make sure.
No, we, we got, we got you.
Resolutions or support for uh, for the.
That's what he just said, that's what it just said.
You already got it.
You, you're behind.
We looked at that, eh?
All right, okay. Second, next meeting date will be September twelfth at two PM.
Okay.
Get motion to adjourn?
Just hit the thing.
Right, meeting during, at four forty-nine.